Good evening everyone, adequate notice that this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Hadsbury Park Press, Milltown Patch and Milltown Township Public School District website and the posting of such notice at the Napoles T Minor Administrative Offices, Elementary, Middle and Secondary School in the district roll hall.
Mrs. Cavanity?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan? Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minuies?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wright? Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Kattong?
Here. And your resolution for executive session for matters of H I D personnel and negotiations.
So one second.
Hold on favor, oppose this discussion, see you in a little while everyone.
This meeting was provided by sending such notice to Asbury Park Press, Middletown Patch and the Middletown Township Public School District website. And the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle and secondary school in the district. Roll.
Mrs. Cavanity?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Benewies?
Here.
Mrs. Wright? Mrs. Tobacco? Mr. Capone?
Here.
Please stand before the light.
My allegiance is to the flag in the United States of America. We stand as one nation.
First of all, recognition tonight. The Administration and Board of Education congratulate and recognize Dr. Haley Oglody for recently earning her doctorate, doctoral degree from Drexel University. Dr. Oglody has been employed by the district since 2017 and currently a speech therapist at New Monmouth Elementary School. On June first, she successfully defended her dissertation augmentative and alternate communication school and home connection for children with autism. A qualitative case study, we commend Dr. Oglody for her perseverance and dedication. Moving on to committee reports, we're going to start with Student Services, Mr. Little.
Um, we didn't meet this past period.
Okay. Facilities and Finance, Mrs. Thorey.
And so our committee met on June sixth and we went over a variety of topics in the area of facilities. We talked about uh looking at a proposal from Spiegel to get uh design work and bid documents on the high school north track and field project. We're still working on fine tuning that proposal down on the agenda this evening. It will be on the agenda in one of the next couple of meetings for the board to approve. Uh, we also went over a department update from Mr. Prukowski on the status of ongoing projects, some of work planning, staffing and work orders. We talked about possibly updating the appraisals that we have had done previously on our vacant lots within the district. And to see what the current market appraised value would be just for the board's reference to consider if we would move forward with anything in that area. And we have Mr. McGuire in our Director of Security and Mr. Kirk Patrick talking about the school violence prevention program of grant, the COPS grant. Uh, that is currently available. Uh, it's a federal program and we are putting together an application for this grant. The maximum award amount under this program is $500,000. And the grant does require a 25% match from the district. So if we are successful with this grant application, we would then be addressing that in our 2324 budget and budgeting that match. Uh, the applications due June 21st and we're having Millennium Strategies assist the district with the application. Uh, we plan on focusing this application on building access controls and expanding those throughout the buildings in the district. We do have access controls. We were looking to expand um those doorways that would be in equipped with that throughout the district. So we're putting that together as we speak. Uh, under finance, we talked about the 2223 meal rates. Those are on the agenda this evening. Uh, the meal rates will increase 25 cents for next year. Uh, meals will not continue to be free for all students next year. So that's something that um we're going to need to also put more communication out during the summer. It is important for students and families to put in their free and reduced uh meal applications if they haven't been doing that over the last two years. Because all students were getting free meals. Uh, we definitely need to go back to doing that diligently. And well, also some students are just not even used to having to pay for lunch and even going through the lifeline and doing that process. So there will be some education of those students and getting them back into that routine. But we have that on the agenda for this evening. Uh, we also have on the agenda this evening uh capital maintenance reserve resolutions. This is something that the board does or annually in June, we must do it by June 30th. If we want to have the ability to make a deposit into a capital or maintenance reserve account. It doesn't obligate the board to do it, but it gives the board the ability to do it. If you don't pass these resolutions, then you're not allowed to make reserve deposits. We don't, we, we have the reserve announced at a maximum of $500,000 for each uh account capital maintenance for this year. Uh, I don't, at this point, we don't know if we would be able to bank those deposits or not. We're still, we haven't closed out the year yet. We will, a lot of the variables like extraordinary aid and things like that, we don't know yet. So that usually impacts our surplus at the end of the year. But we, we do want to have the ability to make those positive if we so choose. So that's on the agenda. We also talked about our liability insurance coverage renewal with the diploma JIF. That is on the agenda for approval uh tonight as well. Uh, we did receive our uh renewal. It is about a 7.9% increase for this year, primarily being driven by increase in property values and an increase in the cyber liability coverage cost. Uh, the workers compensation, which is also a, a driver of the total package, actually ticked down a little bit. So that's, that was good news. But on the liability side, we did see a bit of an increase. This is going to be our third year with the diploma JIF. And that would be our final year that we are committed to the JIF. When we, we join a JIF, we commit for, we have to commit for three years. You can't just flow in and out of those programs. So uh before we do our next renewal, which would be a year from now, we will have done a full marketing on uh different options for insuring us for either the next year or the next three years, depending pop to go back into a JIF. But we are renewing with the JIF one more year. We also have void outstanding checks. We uh must write off stale checks every year before we do the audit and the board needs to approve them. They're on the agenda. We also have a resolution for uh chapter 47, we call them worthy contracts. It's just, uh, we are required to list that in the course of doing business, uh, the district will renew contracts with very, in various categories. They're listed on the agenda. Anything that's individually above the bid limit, the board would be approving separately. But there are smaller things that just get renewed in the course of business that we have to put on the agenda and just alert uh everybody that we're doing that. Uh, we also talked about, we have, we have an RFP, we had an RFP out for a uh insurance broker for property casualty. We're looking at that again before we make an appointment for next year. Uh, the responses were due back June 10th, that was last Friday. So we do have the responses at this point. And there's been a committee put together to review the responses and talk to the respondent firms. And a recommendation will be made uh for next week's board meeting on the appointment of a property and casualty broker. Uh, we also talked about uh the 2122 budget status. And we did touch upon that when we talked about the reserves before. We are looking to see if there would be any available funds to replenish our reserve accounts at the end of the year. But we're, we're still working on finalizing that. And that was it. We did, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one word before I forget. We did also finalize our start date for our new director of facilities. Uh, we have nailed that down to July 11th. So that will be his official start date. We did talk about that committee as well. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Why are we doing the um insurance by committee and not by board of the whole?
So I think that we don't have enough time to get that done for July 1st. So I called and had a committee, which is going to be made up of myself, Ms. Tobacco, Mr. Donlin. And originally it was Mr. Little, he couldn't make it. The second one was Mr. Heffernan.
There's no legal requirement as far as the process goes. Technically, the business administrator can even review and make a recommendation. as far as the process goes. Technically, uh, the business administrator can even review and make a recommendation. It's really uh, there's no legal requirement to have the entire board or even a committee, but we always do involve board members in these processes because they're a recommendation that the board would be voting on.
Hey, moving on to policy, um, Mrs. Tobacco was not here tonight, but I will say we have a first reading on the agenda tonight. Policy D two, Matt, do you want to speak about that?
I do. So at our meeting on Monday, June sixth, we discussed four policies. Two of those policies are existing policies. There was requests for review and modification. One of those policies was new and another one was an existing policy that was on a policy alert. So I'll start with promotion retention, which is an existing policy that there was a request for modification on that. We added the following pieces to that policy. There is a retention committee that was not in that policy. We added the committee's um, existence. We added a parent appeal process for special education students. It initially said that they could appeal to the principal. It now states they can appeal to the district director of special services. And the inclusion of a child study team in the decision process when a classified student's placement is in question was also added. So those three pieces were added to the promotion and retention policy. Political activities is an existing policy that was on a policy alert. We added language that reflected additional restrictions related to the discussion of political activities in a classroom. Record keeping for healthcare settings in school buildings is a new policy. What that policy states is that it requires school districts to maintain a COVID nineteen log related to positive employees in the nurse's office. So if a nurse or another medical employee who works in a nurse's office is COVID positive, the school has to keep an internal log of that positive. Prior to this, we had to report and record. Now the only regulation is for us to record internally. And finally, the random drug and alcohol testing regulation initially stated that our SACS were the only individuals in the building that could make phone calls to parents during the random drug testing process. We added the fact that school administrators can also make those phone calls. So SACS can make the calls to parents as can school administrators. So those four policies are on for a first read. The policy alerts have been uploaded as well as this, the, the minutes and the policies themselves. And there's a number of policies up for second read as well. Those policy alerts have been updated also.
And again, those are just the first reading.
The first reading are the four that I mentioned and then there's a number there being voted on this evening.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to curriculum and instruction, Ms. Farley.
Uh, yes, we met on um, June seventh and I will let you help on uh, kind of give the highlights of what we discussed.
Sure. So it was a fairly lengthy meeting in the sense there was a lot of stuff going on. Um, we discussed first um, the progress forward with our SCL, social emotional learning curriculum, K twelve. Um, Mr. Kirkpatrick and I have been working jointly on that because it is a curriculum writing process and part of our instructional programming, but also falls under the umbrella of um, student services as well. Um, we have also brought into the fold Dr. Meg Young. Um, we are, we have convened a committee um, of our guidance, SBS, and SACS to participate in that curriculum writing process and review various programs. Um, we have a couple of upcoming calls with vendors that will um, that we're meeting with to hopefully provide a consistent K to twelve social emotional learning program and, and curriculum that our SDSSs and SACS and guidance counselors can use um, to support our students' social emotional health. Um, we hope to have that um, completed for uh, our August agenda so that we can be implementing on this, in the start of the school year. Um, so we're really excited about that. Um, another topic we discussed was the advanced placement and dual enrollment weighting at the high school. Um, there is a policy that exists, um, policy five, four, three, zero, class rank, which defines how our dual enrollment and AP classes are currently weighted. Um, there is a weighting of one point three for AP classes and dual enrollment courses if the student fits for the AP exam or they purchase the credits at a dual enrollment courses. Um, we had this come to us as a concern because um, there was some inequity in the sense of students not being maybe able to afford paying for multiple AP tests, potentially not being able to earn college credits for some of these um, AP and dual enrollments for a variety of reasons. Some of them just being for the mere fact that the colleges or university won't accept them. Or the AP test occurs after a lot of them have been accepted already to universities. Um, so what we are proposing is that um, all AP courses and dual enrollments, regardless of if you're sitting for an AP exam or purchasing the credits for college credit, um, will all get a one point three rating to um, you know, if, if they don't, they get the one point two and it does make a difference in some of these class rank situations, particularly in when we're looking at our, you know, our top fifteen percent of students.
Good.
So um, that will be, the next step of that is for it to be brought to the policy committee because it will have to be um, amended in quality if we're going to move forward.
Can I explain?
Sure.
I totally saw and I, I really um, that we pay that the uh, that they know, guidance counselors know who's having a problem with these uh, AP tests.
We do pay for some, but the threshold is student has to be on free and reduced lunch. There are some students that take upwards of seven AP tests. So you know, that's a seven hundred dollar bill and a lot of times those colleges won't even take the credits, even if they take the AP test and earned the college credits.
They won't take.
It's dependent upon the college.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So, so a child may choose to not sit for an AP test because they're not going to get the college credit and, but we're penalizing them. Cause we're giving them the one point two versus the one point three weighting. And we had a situation um, where there was a chance that one of our students that could have potentially been a valedictorian may have not been if they didn't take every single AP exam and they were taking seven. But there was not a real, real good reason for them to have to take seven because the university, the student was attending, was not accepting them all.
I know.
So there, so we're trying to just create a more equitable situation. Um, and we'll still have the expectation that the student, the AP course, our expectation is they do take it. However, um, we also need to have an incentive than the class rank being jeopardized. So we're really probably going to propose that if a student um, takes the AP exam, the weight from the final. So there's some, a little bit of this kind of behind it for them. Um, going along with the theme of grading and rating and class rank, um, we did talk about um, our current um, assessment structure at the high school. Um, if you recall, some of you who have um, been here um, over the course of the last five to ten years, we have moved from a traditional midterm final. We went to four quarterly exams, traditional assessments at the conclusion of every marking period. And then um, a few years back, we moved into a um, a quarter two and a, or a quarter three and a quarter, no, quarter two and a quarter four um, traditional assessment and then a project-based learning experience for the alternate two. Um, we have gotten some feedback that that is still extremely stressful on our students. Um, we were doing that project-based learning quarterly to try to alleviate some of that. Um, you know, that workload that our students have all falling at the same time. Um, we did send a survey out to our teaching staff um, to get their perspective on their feelings surrounding our current structure of assessment at high school. Um, and resoundingly, um, the survey results demonstrated that they believe that a change is warranted. So we did convene um, an assessment committee meeting um, district-wide for high school teachers where we invited um, any teacher to attend. John Farrigan conducted that. Um, and you know, the, the recommendation from the group at large was really to move back to a traditional midterm final structure um, with um, potential half days on those days when we're giving those exams. Um, so we're going to continue to look at that and hopefully um, you know, have something in the next month or so at, at the potential calendar for our, our new assessment schedule for next year. Um, the um, other situation that we talked about, which is another um, regulation we will have to visit is the idea of common grading practices. Um, right now, we are in a situation, we're beginning at our secondary because they are the ones that um, generate miracle grades for the report cards. Um, our elementary is standards-based. So what we are going to be doing is working within each department, first at the high school and then in the middle school to establish common grading parameters and giving teachers guideposts. So that way um, teachers, for instance, in one department will all have the same um, grade composition, meaning testing quizzes, quizzes and projects would be weighted similarly. Um, that way, you know, if two different teachers are teaching the same course, the grade would be um, accounted for in the same manner. So we're moving in that direction. Um, that is work that we're starting at the high school next week and then um, marrying that up with how middle school departments also grade to create some consistency at our secondary um, in those grading practices and, and eventually move into common assessments um, that can then fit into those larger common grading practices. But that is also um, something that will have to be brought through the policy committee because it is um, there is grading language present in the regulation. Um, we, on the agenda for tonight is the approval of the health resource that we have vetted um, called the Great Body Shop. Um, it is a catified consumable um, pamphlet-driven um, program that we vetted um, significantly and cross-swapped with our New Jersey Health and V E standards. So we do know that it covers our content. The um, curriculum committee of the board had an opportunity to preview those materials. We do have an electronic demo account. Um, we are confident that this will afford our students um, adequate access to the content while also being sensitive to the needs of our community um, and providing a resource that our teachers and parents can feel comfortable with um, in delivering the health content for the upcoming school year. Summer programming, we spoke about, um, we are going to be running um, our book clubs, our SOAR program, our AP jumpstarts and our mathematics jumpstarts. Um, they will all, um, our book clubs, we are going to be running virtual end um, in person and that's just by choice. Um, there are some parents that are traveling, so we will be doing some virtual things for them. Um, and our, we will also have book clubs onsite. Our entire SOAR, our intervention program will be live in person. Um, our AP program, we are going to continue with our hybrid model that was actually implemented before the pandemic. Um, where we have live instruction in the morning and then office hours virtually in the afternoon, similar to how students would be able to check in with uh, teachers at the collegiate level if they had a question or um, they needed additional support. We did this in response originally to students um, expressing that they had a challenge in getting to our campus in the summer because of competing things, jobs, sports. Um, you know, they don't love to wake up at eight AM. Um, but so our enrollment had significantly declined when we were holding it solely in person. The hybrid model that we put into place, um, again, pre-pandemic was successful in raising those numbers and providing equitable access for all of our AP students. So there was, we had a better response in those enrollments. Um, there's one more thing. Yes, um, actually two. Um, I'll just touch on these briefly. Our ESL and ASL curriculum writing teams have started um, to write. We'll, we'll be writing eighth grade ASL. It will be an intro course taught by a newly hired staff member who was um, on the last agenda. And then we will be um, writing our own American Sign Language two and three curricula, even though proximity learning, we will be using them to deliver those courses this year just because um, the candidate pool has been challenging in ASL. I know Mrs. O'Hagan has been very involved in active recruitment. Um, and it's just a, it's just an area that is um, you know, underpopulated when you look at candidates. So our hope is to, in the future, move away from proximity and hire more certified and qualified American Sign Language teachers. Um, but the good thing is if we write two and three, proximity will use, will look at that curriculum and marry what they deliver. So that way there's consistency um, in our program. So that's all moving forward. And our ESL teachers have started to write our ESL curriculum. Um, and that will be um, largely based on our literacy program because there are a lot of overlapping skills, but there are new English language standards that we do have to incorporate by um, twenty twenty-three. So we're getting a jumpstart on that. Um, finally, a couple of items of note which are exciting. We were awarded, we applied for and were awarded a grant. Um, it's a partnership between the Insurance Department of Education and Rutgers Literacy called the NJTSF ER Grant. Um, we had put in for two of our elementary schools to work with um, that partnership, Fairview Elementary and Harmony. And um, it is a three-year grant process, but we um, will be working with them to expand our tiered intervention and that will certainly have um, ancillary benefits for the other elementary schools in our district. So we are very excited about that. Um, we are also very excited about another opportunity um, that came to us, which is specifically for Title I eligible high schools. So we pursue this. Um, it's through the National Education Equity Lab. Um, and equity meaning equity of opportunity. And that's why they serve Title I schools because they're looking to support um, bringing in high-level coursework that students may not have access to otherwise. So they've partnered with major universities across the country. Um, we applied and were accepted to potentially run two courses, one in partnership with U Penn for the fall um, and one in partnership with Arizona State for the spring. Um, the title of those courses, the first one is the Psychology of Brit Lab, in Psychology of Passion, Perseverance, and Success. Um, and it's actually taught by Angela Duckworth. I don't know if any of you are familiar with her, but she's one of the uh, leading psychologists i- in the country, if not the world, and she actually teaches the course and it is, the philosophy is it's co-taught virtually with one of our teachers. So we do have a teacher at North who is willing to co-teach that. So it is not a fully virtual experience. Um, but they um, give us access. We can enroll up to twenty-five students. Um, there is a criteria because it is a dual enrollment course where students would gain credit for college. So um, we would like to move forward with that. Timing is of the essence of course. So um, we did get our eyes on the syllabus for the first fall course um, and the syllabus looks um, fantastic. Um, and the curriculum committee did get to take a look at that as well. Um, so again, it's supporting our students' opportunities that they may not have already had. They may not have otherwise. Um, really, um, those were the major topics.
What's the other course?
Um, the other course is called Intro to Cloud Computing. And it, it's out of Arizona State. Um, and it actually won multiple national awards. So that will be a spring offering.
And will that be virtual too?
Yeah, same. So it's, and that's why they require us to not just staff it with um, an instructional aid. They require us to staff it with a certificated teacher because they, the assumption and the expectation is that the course is co-taught.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the professor at the university level and the teacher um, here. So um, Lana Cook, one of our teachers at High School North has offered to do the fall course um, and also do the spring course um, to, to facilitate that.
Now, these are for children that if they have to meet a financial situation.
No, so anyone at High School North can take the course because we are um, Title I eligible. So we, we Title I eligibility um, doesn't have to do whether or not you're targeted or school-wide. We made sure we asked that question.
It's just the title.
Yeah, it's just you have to be eligible, which we are at High School North. So it qualifies us to participate in the program. Um, they align the collegiate course schedule to our course here. So we're in the process of giving them our start date, our scheduled times. Um, you know, we just need to be able to move quickly to get information out to our tenth and eleventh grade students current because it is a course that runs for eleventh and twelfth graders.
Okay. So now that answer the question, what do we do if I school staff?
Well, this is about, this is about Title I schools.
I understand.
So what I foresee maybe in the future could happen is could we look for other courses similar in nature that are dual enrollment classes? Now, with that would come, you know, other pieces. Or do we model a course and write something like it here? Now, it won't be taught by Angela Duckworth, but the content could be potentially something we pursue in the future. Um, you know, I think we should see what it looks like in practice, but then potentially look to mimic something like that to expand our course offerings in the other building eventually.
Okay.
So.
But we should have it there.
Absolutely. These are two great courses.
Yeah. I like, why I want the cloud here.
Yeah, and it, it, it.
That inspires me.
Yeah, it, it won multiple awards and who can beat Angela Duckworth actually?
Well, so.
That's it. That was the busy day, busy weekend.
That was some meeting.
It was a meeting. Sorry.
Oh, great. Um, I think we're going to divert a little bit here to High School North, Miss Sophia Abrah. Thanks for coming, Sophia.
Sorry, please.
No worries.
No, you were busy.
Yes.
The Business Honor Society Induction Ceremony took place on June first. The Business Honor Society induction ceremony took place on June first. On June first and second, the M J S L A science testing took place for juniors. Spring choir concert under the direction of Mr. Peter Ishelworth was held on June second. On June third, the senior prom was held at Ocean Place Hotel in Long Branch. On June seventh, the High School North flag football team lost in the final championship of the season to a regional. The team was undefeated until their last game. The Middletown High School North Art Academy Showcase took place on June seventh from five thirty to seven thirty P M. Senior Awards Night took place on June eighth at six thirty P M and was well attended. Ninety-seven students were awarded with monetary donations thanks to our generous donors. Preschool A M and P M graduation ceremonies took place on Thursday, June ninth. The school, the preschoolers performed You Are My Sunshine in Simon Lynch and displayed their arts in the library. The High School North varsity baseball team won the Central Jersey Group Two sectionals on Friday, June tenth, beating Coltsberg by a score of fourteen to eleven. In the state state semifinals on Monday, June thirteenth, they won by a score of six to one. The final game is on Saturday at ten A M versus Cranford from final. The Group Three State Championship took place on Friday, June tenth. At this news program, we are qualified for the immediate champion. This week we have quarterly and textbook collections. Coming up, we have the National Honor Society Induction Ceremony scheduled for Thursday, June sixteenth at six P M. Fifty-three juniors and seventy-seven seniors are members of the Martha Martha Pennington chapter of N H S. The Pattertop game with North juniors for seniors is scheduled for Friday, June seventeenth at seven P M. On Monday, June twentieth, our P S A will be hosting a catered luncheon for seniors in the cafeteria after the first graduation practice. Two other practices are scheduled for the next Tuesday and Wednesday. June twenty-third is graduation day for the class of twenty twenty-two. On Wednesday, June twenty-second, the seniors from our student government will be conducting an Middletown High School North Olympic for interested students in grades nine through twelve on the soccer field during school day. And that's all. That was my last report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, shared services. We did not meet this month, but we did have the emergency meeting which we spoke about last meeting. Negotiations update, um. Sterling, do you want to take that or?
Sure. So um on the agenda this evening. On the agenda for this evening, um we have a memorandum agreement between the Middletown Township Board of Education and Teamsters Local Eleven, a paraprofessionals unit. Um, it was ratified last week. Um, quick summary is a three-year agreement, term, uh hourly rates for category A are flat for two years and four uh four cents. Um, for category B, uh it ranges from a dollar thirty-three an hour to a dollar fifty-one an hour increase. In category C and D, uh the range is a dollar fifty-three an hour to a dollar seventy-three an hour through the term of the agreement. Um, other than that, there are no other significant changes in the contract.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Anella. And just to recognize tobacco was here tonight, but she had to go to a personal matter that arose. Okay, I'm gonna open the microphone for public comment on agenda items only. Anybody needs to make a statement? Seeing no one coming forward for public comment, um it's my report. Um, so happy flag there, everyone. Um. Like to say that we're wrapping up the end of the school year. Plenty of different events going on all week long for the next couple of weeks. Um, I myself actually was a dad at the Honor Society induction ceremony this weekend. It was very cool, actually, just to be on the field and watching your son come up to get the award. It was touching. Um. That's really all I have to report. School's almost out. Everybody's very happy. That's what I can say. I need a motion to approve twelve A one.
So move.
Amy, can I get a roll call on that one?
This is Caminiti?
Yes.
Mister Donlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mister Happerton?
Yes.
Mister Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuise?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mister Capone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion to approve twelve B one through five.
So move. Two, three, six.
Yeah.
It looks like they're the same.
It it's.
It just got, all right, so two through six.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. C one through five.
So move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I'm opposed then number two.
Abstentions. Motion to approve thirteen A through C. Motion to approve thirteen A and B.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. Motion to approve C. Sorry, B two. B two and three.
What's that? One, we did all of the, we, there's nothing on the same, so we're doing D, one.
D one, two.
D one through four, correct?
Um, D one.
So move.
What? Mine, yeah, we don't have the one on ceiling. No, I'm gonna get.
Everybody have the right stuff.
Under policy, there's also the addendum.
But there's no vote on.
First reading.
Right. On your D one.
We just have D one here, right?
D one's the second reading.
You need a vote on D one.
Yes, yes, vote on D one, the second reading, the addendum, uh first reading, the addendum.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. I need a motion to approve. E one through four?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. Motion to approve F one through five. Discussion.
Yeah, can I, can I just raise something real quick? Um, so on number four, the approval of the new breakfast and lunch prices.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know I was late and I apologize for that. So I don't know if anything was discussed out of the legislative committee, but there is currently a bill pending both in the Assembly and the Senate, um that I think has gotten pretty far outside of committee trying to address what's now going to happen at the end of this month, which is the federal universal free lunch programs or in COVID is going to expire. Do we have any information like further about that bill trying to expand obviously the eligibility for that going, I think, up to two hundred percent of the federal poverty level? I don't know if.
I saw some information off what you're speaking about. I know it hasn't obviously passed yet. So even if that didn't move to pass, then we would have to wait and get guidelines from the New Jersey Department of Agriculture on how we would execute that. But, but you're right, there is, there is pending potential legislation out there, but as of right now, we have to move as if.
Oh, no, I'm not saying to delay this. That, that, that wasn't my point. My point was that I would hope um that as a board, we would try and support that bill through committee because it would actually really help, I think, a lot of additional families here within the district too. So if some way we could sort of just voice our support for that, I think that would be really important.
We have been inquiring, which since last couple of times, they had advised us that to go right now is going forward. We have to consider it as being expired. But obviously, we're trying to fight it any way we can, trying to get.
Right.
Ex- expand, uh extended. So a motion to approve is in.
I don't know that we did the actual vote on financial.
No, we didn't. We didn't. That was in discussion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. Need a motion to approve six through ten.
So move.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. Motion to approve G one.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose, extensions. That's. Yep, personnel. And a motion to approve one through one through six B.
So move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. A motion to approve seven through sixteen.
So move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. Okay, moving now to your report, right, Mary Ellen? Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Um, as Mister Capone did say, you know, our year is coming to a close and schools have really been busy with our end of year activities. We've had field days, concerts, award ceremonies, art shows, and athletic events. Um, we're finalizing our preparations for the middle school promotions and the high school graduations, which are going to take place next week. It's been exciting to see a full return of all of our celebrations after two years. It's it's really nice to see the students really participating in things that they really haven't been able to in in quite a while. Uh, the district is offering a full slate of summer programs which kick off on July fifth. These include our extended year program at New Mom and then Bay Shore. Our SOAR program for literacy and math intervention for students in K to eight. Esports camps for students in grades five to eight. Instrumental music programs for grades three and seven, our book clubs, our jump start uh programs. And our summer recovery program for the high school students. Um, also, our mental health supports will remain in place during the summer for our students um that are in our Effective School Solutions Program. And the, excuse me, the Y M C A is continuing to offer their um counseling sessions by appointment. Finally, earlier this evening, two hundred and thirty-five students were invited to be recognized by the Board of Education. These students have distinguished themselves in the arts, academics, and athletics and have brought pride and honor to our district. These honored uh students included our Special Olympic Student Athletes. The annual Superior Court of New Jer- Jersey Law Day Poetry Contest winners. Um, many, many basey award nominations and winners and our allshore student athletes, as well as four of our championship teams. This year, um, we have uh the High School North Hockey Team won the State Conference uh Ice Hockey Tournament of Champions. The High School North Boys Track Team won the Central Jersey Group Three Sections Track Championship. The High School South Girls Country Team or Cross Country Team earned the title of Central Jersey Group Four State Cross Country Champions. And High School South Girl Swim Team won the Shore Conference Tournament Champ. They were all recognized tonight.
Okay, great. Moving on to old business. Anyone for old business? Any new business?
I have a few things to throw in. Um, so two of the schools that I help support are Thorn and Bay Shore. I want to congratulate Thorn on a very successful, their first annual Spring Craft Fair and Food Truck Festival. That was sponsored by the P T A. It was really cool. It was a lot of fun. And so I look forward to seeing that grow next year. Um, for Bay Shore, I wanted to congratulate them on a successful production of The Addams Family. That was really cute. It was a lot of fun to see all the students there and as well as their esports team that just won the state championship for, let's find me get this right, because it's super smash, super smash brothers game. Um, they defended their title uh and one of the boys actually on the esports team was from our Cub Scout Pack one forty-one. So it was really cool to see them uh be able to do that. And then for Bayview, um just putting out there that they had a really great theater week last week. Um, we were finally able to bring that program back. I was able to chair that. Um, I was a little nervous about sixty-one kids um and being able to corral them, but they did a phenomenal job with their production. And then tonight was the uh fourth and fifth grade band recital um that my son was in, which is why I was late. So that was a lot of fun.
Very nice.
It's really, yes, it was really nice. The kids were so excited.
Excellent. Anyone else in new business? Public comment? Anyone who used to make a public comment, please step forward, see your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm taking a charge of them.
Maybe.
Um, great things. Thank you for changing, I've no skin in the game, but changing the A P um directives and also looking and going back to mid juniors and finals. I I think that more replicates what's happening in college. I think that's positive thing to go back to. Um. I'm, uh, be honest with you, I'm not sure if this is the right setting to raise this, um, because I don't know if it's local or if it's a stipend issue. So I decided to go right to the top. Um, four years ago, um, we had a program in High School South and probably some other schools called Circle Friends. And the kids met um two times a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Very um informal, the general ed kid, the volunteer signed in. It's a little gym and they had basketball and they brought in the low hoops for the kids that couldn't, you know, physically manage the basketball. And that program um really um created incredible friendships. Um, some that made um major network news. Um, where kids, you know, went with friends to proms and things like that. Um, there are, were um neurotypical high school students that participated that, that have um claimed that it's changed the whole trajectory of their life. Um, I know one young man that went to Purdue um and replicated the program and volunteered at Purdue as well with uh adults with special needs. Um, again, that's pre-COVID, flash to after COVID. And we can no longer call it Circle Friends trademark issue, whatever it might be. Um, and we have a friendship club that instead of two times a week meets twice a month after school. Which is very difficult. Um, kids have to get transportation home, particularly when you're in high school. Um, the typical gen ed kids that would volunteer, they even have sports or they have work. It's, it's not um, um, something that's easy for them to do, plus they don't find transportation home as well. And I would just like to encourage um the board or whoever that we kind of get back to P C, pre-COVID. Um, and um Institute, that amazing program. I think nobody has suffered more than um our children in the self-contained classes that were extremely isolated. And my son, pre-COVID volunteered um in the Circle Friends program. And I, I mean, after COVID and getting back to the center, I mean, there's mom, I just feel awful. I sit at tables at lunch, I can't go near, I think I've designated seats. I mean, he was sitting there saying, how do I, you know? How do, how do I help them, you know, help socialize? And it just, it just wasn't, we weren't able to do that in that situation. Um, so again, I, I just, it was such an amazing program and I, I wanted to bring it up because of um, there's been a lot of turnover and I'm not sure a lot of people even realize that that program existed. Um, you know, we've had a lot of um changeover in system principles, all good things happening. Um, but I wanted to make sure that people understood that that program existed. It happened naturally, easily. Um, and I think it's really something we need to get back and 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 have in our schools. Um, I think we can get that back there. Um, and I, I think Mr. Patrick would know, I, I believe Mr. Chaz would probably run it, give advice and and things like that. But again, I didn't know if it was a stipend issue or what was going on, but uh um, I hope we can get that back.
Thank you. Look at Vera. Thank you so much.
I'm trying to get to see if it would, if it could please in the middle school locker because I know Bay Shore had a strong Circle Friends Club. I haven't heard a thing about it all yet.
Is it, and Vera just mentioned there's something about the name that we can't utilize anymore or?
Right, everybody has a different name now. Um, and so every, uh, and John makes a good point. So for example, Thompson had a program. Again, my daughter went for a while, but then she decided she'd rather go to the cafeteria anyway and not go. But they had it during school at lunch. Um. And I think it was called fostering friendships. So e- everybody has a different name. Thorn was not able to set one up. I think Mr. Patrick told, uh, get it, but they set those up after school. Which I know was a problem for um a lot of working parents that had kids with special needs, they, they couldn't, you know, pick them up and things like that. So everybody is a little different. Um so uh it's, it's, it's something, I guess, it could be like that.
I like that, yours, brilliant.
But you know, it, it's something that actually has to be built into the teacher's schedule during the day, so you know, going into this year, things were still a little different, right? And here, I know he said the high school, the advisories, both teachers were being used because the students were in right classrooms in the beginning, so um going into next year, it's something definitely that will.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, kind of feel like I can get back to pre-COVID.
Yeah, there's some things that I just couldn't, weren't able to do because schedules that were already put in place, but starting next year, fresh, they will.
Yeah, and, and, and again, it's just such an amazing program. Um you know, I, I, I reached out to one young man over social media like twenty minutes ago and he's like, can I get a testimonial, you know? You know, somebody that just, it meant so much to him and he wasn't a special education student, so it really meant a lot, so thank you.
As always, thank you, Vera.
The Bay Shore one, like, held after school. Math school activity.
It was, it actually, well, it wasn't for Bay Shore, it was for all the middle schools that we get bussed over there, I remember.
Thorn, Thorn got bussed over there. But yeah, because they didn't have that Thorn, but it was held after school, wasn't it, came to the teacher's schedule.
Definitely. But the high school one.
Yeah. They had middle school.
Very good. Anyone else that can make a public comment?
Thank you, Gary Tolman, six oh one, Canada Boulevard. Um I just want to alert the board, anybody listening, I'm a River Positad. River Posit is entering its one hundredth year. It's uh doors opened in nineteen twenty-three, I think.
Great.
Right, it was built in twenty-two, opened in twenty-three, something like that. So there's a lot of cool stuff going on, getting ready for that, um promoting it. Um for one thing, our, our, our P S A and our president here, Susan Rutherford, um is collecting all kinds of cool stuff. Games, toys, things that were in the, in the twenties, um that are going to be part of some of the celebrations they're doing. Um there's also a movement I put to, put together, one of the things that would be a pretty cool monument um that, yeah, this is just a lookout, but something the kids can kind of enjoy and play with or appreciate. Um and so that obviously is going to require funding, so I believe there'll be a flyer coming out soon for the public or anybody interested in donating that. If there's any sort of district resources for those kinds of projects or for things that the, the district wants to promote, I would encourage that as a worthy uh target for that. And uh just trying to raise awareness for the cool stuff going on with the September.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Uh Barry, you know that woman in the crowd?
I do.
I'm just.
Married to that woman.
Okay. I know the same name for a second.
Yeah. That's official.
I do. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, I make a motion to adjourn.
So move, so move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. Have a great night, everyone.